We're gonna get started, guys. The meeting will come to order.
Mark, right away, we can't hear you, just so you know. Thank you.
The meeting will come to order, and let me first of all mention that for public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the meeting room, back here on the east wall, if anybody needs to read that, it's there. We'll have roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer? Reizig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Mr. Meyer informs he wouldn't be able to be here this evening, so we'll continue to proceed here. Next item is Pledge of Allegiance, if you would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is approval of the agenda and/or consider any modifications that we might have.
Real quick, did you have any announcements that you wanted to make? After me? I would like to make a change to the agenda.
Okay, let's let you do that first.
Okay, one, two, three, the fourth item on the general agenda item, or general agenda items? If you could pull that, please. A capital improvement grant for pioneers.
Okay, so, yeah, it's the one that says discuss and consider action for capital improvement grant for the West Nebraska pioneers. They've asked to take that one off of the agenda, so we'll plan on that. Any other changes in the agenda? If not, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda with the removal of item four in general agenda item.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Yep, four yeses.
All right, motion's carried.
So, all I hear are blowers going in the room right now.
Really?
So, we really need to lean in, because I couldn't hear Mike, and I'm sitting right here by him.
Yeah.
Can you guys, can anybody hear? You can't hear, okay? Okay, all I hear is that.
We'll try and speak into the microphone, and in fact, yeah, I went right past my announcements, and so let me do that now. I want to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded to be broadcast at a later date. That's part of the reason why Ms. Kelly is wanting to be sure that everyone is heard. So remember, whoever wants to speak this evening, we would ask you to come forward to the microphone here at the podium. When you are recognized, then come on up. Also, we need you to state your name for the record, and spell your name, which helps Kelly get her written minutes correct. So be sure you understand that. Also, there's no swearing or any other inappropriate language. When you speak here, we rarely have issues with any of those kinds of things. We all need to check our cell phones. Ms. Kelly always reminds me that if you can either put yours on silent or shut them off, that would be great for less interruptions. I want to again remind, not only did I remind the audience, but I need to remind commissioners to speak into the microphones. Apparently tonight, it's even more important because of the, our air conditioner is fixed, and we're hearing the blowers on a little more, but at least I guess it's working. But we need to speak directly into the microphones.
I bet that's just moving air, and the air conditioner might be...
In the off position.
Well, not necessarily off, but turned up, I don't know. We'll deal with it.
Right, so we'll try and speak into the microphones. Depending on how long the meeting goes, a lot of times midway, I like to take an eight-minute recess, depending on how long the meeting goes tonight. Other than that, I think we're ready to continue on the agenda here. The next item we'd like to mention is the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. I don't believe we have a, we don't have any executive sessions scheduled for tonight, but if something came up where we and/or our attorney felt that it'd be more appropriate to be an executive session, we do that, so want you to be aware of it. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent is that we take one action for several items, including the minutes, remittances, correspondence, claims, and other miscellaneous items, and we do it all in one motion unless one of the commissioners want to consider an item separately. I would ask if anyone would want to consider anything separately tonight. If not, we'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses.
The motion's carried, we'll move on to the next item. The next item is a public hearing for 4:30, which is to discuss and consider recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control for Off-the-Water LLC liquor license. Ms. Kelly, do you want to start?
Lindsay submitted information to the Liquor Commission, and then they sent the instructions on to me to publish for a public hearing, and to have the board make their recommendation to them.
Okay.
And it's in your packet.
Yeah, so we have copies of the application in our packets. So, I guess, Lindsay, are you going to speak on this issue? And let me officially open the public hearing this evening, and we'll come up and let, or have you come up and tell us about the license, and then we'll open it up to any public comment, all right?
First, I would just like to ask if it would be possible that we could push this issue until the next meeting. I was informed that none of the law enforcement, State Patrol, or the Sheriff's Office, they were not able to have enough time to vet properly and do their proper due diligence towards this issue, and I feel like it's very important that they are able to do that to give a proper recommendation. So with your approval, I'd like to move this to the 16th, please, if that's possible.
Do you like to have a table for the next meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay.
All right.
If you'd like me to discuss it further, I can, or...
I think we can probably do that. Is the sheriff back there anywhere?
He is.
So sheriff, I'm assuming you're okay with that?
Yeah, and I, she and I have had a conversation.
Okay.
We just haven't had time, and I, we haven't had time, because we got late, and just talked to the State Patrol investigator, and he is... So neither of us have had time to properly do it, and I explained that to Lindsay. Because she asked you to just push it to the next meeting.
Okay. I guess I would ask, Kelly or Jason, do you know of any other issues that this would cause?
Lindsay, help me remember when I got this the first time, so that I know if I have time to publish for a public hearing.
So, we had our last meeting Monday, whatever Monday that was, and then we submitted on Tuesday, and I believe on Wednesday is when you publicized.
So there's a good chance I have time to advertise for a public hearing again?
Yes, because it's how many, it's six, forty, thirty, sixty?
Seventeen to four, in between the seventeen and fourteen days.
I, we wouldn't... We would not.
Not more than fourteen days, but not less than seven is my requirement.
We would not have enough time then. Would that mean that I would just need to resubmit the file?
No, 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 no. Not less than seven days before.
Sorry to make it difficult, I'm just trying to follow everybody's rules and recommendations.
Yeah, we're just trying to make it work right.
And I also don't want to waste your time in doing the whole speech and all of the things, and then...
And then have to do it again.
Exactly. A little nerve-wracking thing up here, so...
Yeah, I don't think, my suspicion is, is that we can put it off for two weeks. I don't know the exact logistics of how we're gonna do it, but I think, I think it can happen.
Except that Kelly, I think, just publicized one time, not less than seven days.
I am, I know.
Yeah.
I'm trying to make sure that I have time for her, or if we should just schedule for the first meeting of July.
So that was the other issue, is just how many things are on the agenda for two weeks?
It doesn't matter, I published it separately. I want to make sure I have time to do it within my guidelines. Not, not less than seven, not more than fourteen, because I'm, I'm due to leave town tomorrow, not even be here, so I would need to get this work, like, get it submitted immediately, like, right now, maybe.
I'm so sorry, Kelly.
You're talking about for the publication?
I sent it on the 21st, the date I saved this. I'm so sorry.
Says you have forty-five days to conduct a hearing, is that what you're reading?
Sixteen.
I'm late, and I... I think if I do it while you guys are working, and send it in, I might be able to...
So, with that thought in mind, that it sounds like logistically we can make it happen, Jason, do we need to, if she's asking for it to be withdrawn, do we need to take any action up here?
We just table it.
Or do you, do you want it tabled, or do you want it something else?
It could be tabled at her request and reschedule that date certain.
Okay, is that all right with everybody?
Yeah. And then I will let her know if it's going to be the second meeting of June or the first meeting of July?
Right.
We're already here on the 16th for the sign as well.
Okay, so your preference would, I'm assuming, be to get it as soon as possible?
If I could get two things at once, that'd be wonderful.
All right, so if we, logistically, if we can get it done in two weeks, then that'd be the best for you, is what you're saying?
A, a meeting would be the best for me, but yes, the 16th is my preference, but whatever works, works.
All right, well, we appreciate that.
Sorry to cause some delays here.
Okay. All right. Okay, so did someone already suggest to table it?
I would make a motion to table this.
For two...
Two weeks to the 16th of June.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And that's per the applicant's request?
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second?
Can I get those again, please?
What's that?
Could I get those again?
Yeah, the motion was from Russ.
Okay.
Second was from Mike.
I was trying to make a notice.
That's okay, so that's what we have, any other discussion from commissioners? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses to table.
All right, motion's carried, so, yeah, that'll be the intention then, and hopefully we can do it as early as two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
But stay in touch with Kelly, and she can keep you informed.
All right, thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thanks, sorry, but thank you so much for your help.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Okay, we'll go on on the agenda, to the next item, Board of Equalization. We'll need a motion to go into the Board of Equalization.
I move that we go into the Board of Equalization.
Our second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to go into Board of Equalization, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Heck, I hit the wrong one. Oh, well.
You have three yeses and one nay, the nay being Reizig.
All right.
I do that on myself.
All right, the motion's carried, so...
Make yourself a note for when you can't remember why you did that.
So it is, we are in Board of Equalization. The only item here is to receive the tax list corrections. We have a copy of those in our packet, we have two of them, I believe, this evening. Are there any questions from the commissioners on these?
You ready for a motion?
I am.
I'll make a motion to accept the tax list corrections as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
I know it's gonna be right.
You have four yeses.
All right, motion's carried, need to go out of the Board of Equalization?
I'll make a motion to go out of the Board of Equalization.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion to go out of the Board of Equalization in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have four yeses.
All right, motion's carried, so we're moving on the agenda to the road and bridge items. Steve, if you want to come up, the first item is to discuss and consider gravel bids.
Okay, that time of the year, again, where we bid out our gravel for the year, we received two bids, one from REM Screening, excuse me, and the other one from Simon Contractors. If you could add those in your packets, the prices. REM Screening, their prices are exactly the same as last year, depending on which pit we get it from. It varies from $9.50 a ton to $12 a ton for their oversize. The Simon gravel bid, this year is at $16.10 a ton, last year it was $13.90, so it went up $2.20 a ton. In the past years, we've always accepted both gravel bids, because neither, neither pit can keep up once we start hauling gravel, and it gives us a different variety of, where we can go is to location of where we want to gravel, so...
So, REM Screening has four different locations, is that what I'm seeing here?
Yes, they have one north of Mitchell, one north of Minotaret by the lake, and one up north of Scotts Bluff here, north of Lake Oyl.
Yeah, I think I remember that, that we generally approve both bids, so that if you can't get it from one, you can go ahead and use the other.
Correct. The REM Screening is not a pumped gravel, it's a screen gravel. Pastures, our rocky pastures up in the north part of the county and stuff. Simon's is pumped gravel. That's why it's a little more expensive, too.
And again, that also gives you the opportunity to use whichever one, if there's a preference that way.
Correct.
Is there anyone here this evening on this item? Seeing none, any discussion from the commissioners? I'd entertain a motion.
Move to accept both bids.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to accept both bids. We have a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have four yeses.
All right, motion's carried. All right, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is discuss and consider bridge bids for Project C-79, 449, Bridge C-007926910. Steve?
This bridge was on our one-year plan this year to refurbish. This bid that you received here was, we just received them today and opened it one o'clock in Kelly's office. This bid for this bridge is just materials only. So this has a timber, or a steel and concrete substructure that's in good shape, but has a timber deck, so we will do, like we did on the County Road M project, take that timber deck off, and it will get concrete slabs and guard rail, and approach guard rail bit up back on it. The bridge currently is a five-ton bridge, this will, this will update it to a 99-ton bridge.
How much?
A 99-ton bridge.
Ninety-nine?
Yeah. So, this bridge was also selected as part of the bridge match for last year, so by completing this, we'll obviously get some funds back from NDOT for this. So, we did receive just one bid from Odin Enterprises for $143,160.52. And once again, that is just materials, we do the work, and RNC Welding gives us a hand, we get their crane in there to set the slabs in, and that sort of thing, so... I'm not surprised that it's only one bid, there's only really one company in the state that makes these slabs, because of the camber of the slabs have to be to drain water. So, this is the same company's made the slabs for, since I've been at the county, anyway. So, they do it, they do it all the time, so... This bridge also is located northeast Minotaret on 35 between G and H, so...
County Road 35 between G and H.
Yes, so, and it's a two-span bridge, so...
All right, so I'd ask again, is there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, any comments from the commissioners?
No, I think that project was supposed to be done this year, and it's gonna actually be done in next year's budget, right?
Yeah, it'll carry into next year's budget, we'll get it done in the fall when the water goes out, so it'll be a September, October project, so... And actually, I just didn't push it, everything was done, but I just didn't push it, because I didn't know what's happening with the river bridge, to make sure we had enough funds to pay for that, so...
Which canal does this cross?
This would be Pathfinder.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the bids as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to accept the bid as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have four yeses.
All right, motion's carried. All right. Steve, you have one more item, to re, were to receive a river bridge update.
Yes, so this week, today, they removed the crane, tore it down, got the crane out, they're getting some other equipment out of there. Tomorrow, they're gonna go in, they will clean the deck, seal up some joints, get it all broomed off, and then Thursday, the striper comes in, and the signs and the striping will be done, so Thursday afternoon, it will hopefully be opened up, so...
Wonderful.
How much is that ahead of schedule, Steve?
Um, you know, it's probably about, working days that they were gonna have, it's probably about twenty days, but they were anticipating if they had problems when they tore into it, you know, it can take it, take it up to that year. So, the project itself, I think, went along really smooth, so IKEA Constructors was a really good, they had a good crew out here working on that, so...
We originally had told the public as late as the end of the year.
Right.
So we're virtually more than six months ahead of that.
I would say six months.
I believe it was closed in November, is when they first closed it and started on it, so... Yeah, it's running well, really well, so it should be a good, good deal. They have some seeding and erosion work to do on the bank there, they're gonna do Thursday, too, but they can do that part under traffic when it gets back, opened back up.
Right. Very good.
Good.
Well, we're certainly happy about that.
Oh, I am, too.
I know the public, and the public is as well. We're tired, tired of taking the long way. So, all right, we appreciate it, thanks. All right, the next item is the general agenda items. We'll start with the first one, which is discuss and consider action regarding a request of proposal for inmate communication services. Sheriff?
Hi Sheriff Mark Overman, good afternoon, gentlemen. So this is something that we don't bring to you very often, but inmate communication services is, it allows the inmates to communicate with friends, family, but it's, and they can do that by telephone, and they can do that by live video chats, but there's a lot, there's other things that go along with that now. It used to just be telephone services, and now they, and now what they have is, they have tablets. And so if you're familiar with an iPad, it's kind of, it's not, they're not iPads, but they're similar to that, and they're a lot tougher, but they can also access movies and TV shows and radio shows and podcasts, and they read their mail on, on their, on their, on their pads, and they can see all of the communications that the jail sends to them, so, and they can see the jail handbook, and they can get access to a law library. And so there's just a lot of different things that streamlines what we do, but it also, some of the things that, so all of the companies that have bid are bidding these iPad sort of things, they're called tablets, so they're all bidding those, and that's what everybody does. We have bids from three different companies, they're all reputable companies. The one that we're with right now is called ICS, we've been with them for a lot of years. Then, and so we got a bid from them, we also have a bid from a company called Encartel, E-N-C-A-R-T-E-L-E, and then we have another bid from a company called NCIC. So we've, our staff at the jail has gone through and looked at all of these bids. One of the things that I need you to know is that the FCC has changed the rules. We, all of these companies used to be able to, to bill inmates telephone calls at a rate of 21 cents a minute, and there's been a lot of blowback on that through, kind of all across the country, that that's too expensive. And so the FCC came out with something, and, and that, that goes from 21 cents a minute to in July of this year for us, we were kind of grandfathered, it's gonna go to nine cents a minute. That's gonna reduce our income off of this, so, and, and all of these companies are under the same thing. And so I think a lot of these companies have filed appeals, I know one of them, we've seen the appeal letter from NCIC, but my guess is some of the others have, too, because it's got an adverse effect on all of them. So what we're looking at is the best deal for the county, and also the best deal for the inmates. and also the best deal for the inmates. And so I know that you've had all of these proposals to look at and they are long and involved. And I mean, they come in three, they send them to us in hard copy form. They're in three-ring binders and so we had to copy them all, get them in a format so we could send them to you. But what I would tell you is having, having ICS actually gives us the highest revenue projection, but not by a lot. And we're talking about 31.75 a month for them. But it's hard to determine how some of this is actually going to fall. The other thing I'll tell you about ICS is that we've had them for a lot of years and we're not very happy with them. We have a lot of breakdowns and a lot of problems and a lot of unkept promises, telling us that they were going to keep replacing things and upgrading things, and now they want to give us new tablets and do the new thing and they promised us that before. When it does break down, that creates a big problem for us because of the detainees, they, they, they can't order things off the kiosk. That's how they order commissary, it's how they access their mail, it's how they access all sorts of things. And they've been pretty good, except there's three different websites that we have to deal with. And, you know, and frankly, they just, you know, one of the reasons we're here with an RFP is because of our unhappiness with this company. The other, the other company is called NCartel. It's hard to discern what they would actually pay us. We're thinking somewhere between 70 and 2100 dollars a month. But part of, they, so we do mail screening right now. And so anybody that mails something to a detainee at our facility has to mail it to an out-of-state place. And this out-of-state place scans it and they know who the employee is or who the detainee is, and then they put it up electronically so they can see it then, almost instantly, the same day it comes, they're going to see it on their kiosk and they can read it. Well, that service is included with ICS, it's included with NCIC. But NCartel wants to charge us 645 bucks a month for that. So when you start taking that off the top of what they say they're going to pay us, then it diminishes them. And, you know, we know one place that has them in Nebraska. We've vetted all of these places, we went to places that have them. And, and one place, Grand Island Hall County, has NCartel and they seem satisfied with it. But the one that, that, that I'm going to recommend to you is NCIC. And frankly, they've been courting us for years, they have. We know they've got a challenge into the FCC to try to get the money back up a little bit. We talked to multiple places in, both in Wyoming and Nebraska that have them and they like them. Had nothing bad to say. Another, they, they are expanding in Wyoming. They've got, they've got Cheyenne, they've got Casper, and they've got the Wyoming prison system. And the other, the other thing that speaks well of them is for several years now, they con, they contract with a local company, Robinson Electric, to do their work for them. So Robinson Electric does a lot of work for the county and they're known to us as a, as, as far as I know, good and reliable company. They always have been whenever I've dealt with them. And so, and I've talked to Mr. Robinson about him and he speaks highly of this company. So when they have problems in Cheyenne, Robinson Electric is going to Cheyenne or going to Casper, help them with whatever they need that's electrical in nature. The other thing that they have is, they have a, they have a law library. All of these have law libraries on their, on, on the, on these pads. But these guys have the best one, because it's the LexisNexis library and it's, it's what a lot of attorneys use. And so it's the best one. And if we have to provide detainees that represent themselves with a law library, we got, we have to make sure it's the right one. So that's a good one. The other thing that they have is they have the best programming. So they have over a thousand hours of, they can watch movies, TV shows, things like that. And they have over a thousand books that they can get access to. And they, and so that right there, they are way better than the others. And the thing is, when these guys want to watch movies and books, they have to pay for that. Okay, that's not free. We give them some free things. And, and, and so there's, like the law library, that's free to them. But watching TV, so, so we think that their actually monthly projection would probably be better. The other thing that they have is a, a learn-to-earn program. For every hour they take that's education-related, and that's all free. They're going to give, this company will give them an hour for streaming. And we think that will be popular. They have, and some of the things they can get is they can take GED classes, they can take parenting, interpersonal and social skills, and how to get your driver's license, just a lot of things that would help detainees when they get out. And they, the other thing that this, that this company offered us and that nobody else did, is a legal mail scan card. So I told you how personal mail works, they have to mail that someplace else. And it gets scanned and then it gets shredded. With legal mail, the way we have to handle legal mail is when that comes into our facility, we have to open that in the presence of the detainee, show it to them, and then we copy it and hand them the copies and we shred it. Okay? The reason we do that is because you can soak paper in drugs and permeate that paper. And you would think that legal mail would, that that wouldn't happen in legal mail, but the fact is, those inmates, they, their friends and family can steal or reproduce an attorney's letterhead and send it stamped "legal mail", we wouldn't know. And we actually had that happen. So we changed the, they changed our, our, our policy and most places have, for the same reason. So there, this company will give us a legal mail cart. That scan cart is going to have a laptop and a scanner and a shredder right there. So we no longer would have to bring all of these detainees down to booking to do this and scan it in front of them. We can, we can take that cart to all of the different pods that we have and do it right there in front of them. And so they've offered that, too. And they have one website to deal with. And so I would, I would ask your approval to contract with NCIC as a result of this RFP.
What's the changeover going to be like when you actually change them out?
Oh, probably 30 days. And they, I mean, they'll send a crew.
Are they going to overlap a little bit, or how does that work?
Probably a little, yeah. Be a little overlap. Our, our, our ICS contract is up sometime in July. And so if you approve this tonight, then we've given NCIC enough of a heads up that, that they should be able to do it. They all know, and they're used to doing this. These are, in most respects, these are big companies that do this in a lot of places.
You don't see laps in service or anything, though?
I do not anticipate any lapse in service.
Before we get too carried away with the discussion up here, is there anyone in the audience that needs to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead, Mike.
Will I move that we accept the bid from NCIC?
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the bid that was recommended to us from NCIC. And so I would ask if there's any other discussion. I have a couple of questions for you. So on this, do, I'm assuming this takes internet service and then?
Well, it, it does, but it's very closed. It's very closed, it's their own system, and they install the system.
So they're not using our system?
No, 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 they are not. They're not using our system and they do not have access to the internet, per se. They don't, they can't go on Google and do anything.
Good.
They have what they feed into as well.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very locked down, it's a closed system.
So even if it's a podcast or whatever, it's still just what they give them?
They can just get those things.
Okay. Each inmate has their own device, right?
Well, that's what's, that's what will happen with NCIC. Right now, right now, we have, we have banks of these devices. And at 10 o'clock at night, everybody has to put them back in and they charge overnight. And then the next day, they just take one out and then they just have to log in using their credentials. NCIC, their program, they see, they said they have better luck with issuing one to an inmate that belongs to them. And we're fine with that, too.
So you said possible income in the up to 2100 dollar range per month?
We're estimating this one at about 20, 2581.
Per month?
That's, but there's so many variables. It's just really, and especially if they have more things that are offered and price of phone calls goes down, then we may see more usage from the, from the detainees.
More usage, but less per minute?
Yeah, less per minute. And there's no way around the less per minute. That's, that's nationwide.
So I think when you mentioned it's their own internet and that they only provide them the content that I'm, I'm assuming is allowed and so there isn't a bunch of inappropriate content available to them.
There's none that we're aware of.
Okay. And all of these services are basically, maybe not all, but the majority of these are required by the Nebraska jail standards. Would that be correct?
I would say the, the, the basic communication, the mail and the phone calls and video visitation are probably all required by jail standards. I don't know that all the, the movies and things that they can get access to, I don't know those are, that those are required by jail standards. I would guess they're probably not, but they're really common in correctional settings. And it just helps them, you know, occupy their time, I would say.
Alright. I appreciate it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to approve NCIC.
You have four yeses.
Motion's carried. Appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Alright, next item is to discuss and consider an action for Phil Mitchell on a special designated license, I think that means.
Sheriff, he ran away, too soon.
Sheriff's office has no objection to the SDO.
Alright. So I would ask, is there anyone else here this evening on this item, which is a special designated license for a liquor license, basically? One-time use. Not seeing any, any one to comment. Commissioners, do you have any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the liquor application as presented.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to accept the SDO license as submitted. Hearing no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses.
Motion's carried. Alright. We'll go to the next item, which is discuss and consider appointment of Becca Gorsuch to the Tourism Committee. I'm going to report on that this evening. The Brenda Lacy from the Tourism Group is not here this evening because they're having a Sports Council initial meeting and she, along with several of the tourism people are at that meeting this evening. But with that, they did have a special meeting last Friday, I believe, and the Tourism Committee voted to recommend Becca Gorsuch to fill the vacant position on the Tourism Committee. And they wanted me to present that to you this evening. And so wanted to make you aware of that. So, and she, she was at the meeting on Friday, Becca was, and she is interested in filling that position. Any discussion on that item? Entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the appointment of Becca Gorsuch to the Tourism Committee.
I'll say it.
Have a motion and a second to approve Becca to the Tourism Committee. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses.
Motion's carried. The next item is the one that has been pulled from the agenda concerning the Western Nebraska Pioneers. So we are going to go to the next one. We have a lot of folks here tonight. And so this is the Extension Educators, Nathan Rice, Emily Stein, and Master Gardener Lori Zitterkopf and 4H members. So we wanted to be sure and mention several of your 4H members, I believe, early on was helping Kelly set up chairs and things over here. We appreciate that. And I would always invite young people to be here. And we appreciate you guys all being here, being interested in what you're doing and being interested in being here at this meeting. So we appreciate it. But go ahead, guys.
Yeah, I just have the enormous privilege of, of introducing these guys. So we have a great partnership realistically between Emily Stein, Lori Zitterkopf, who's a master gardener and 4H volunteer, and then some amazing young people that took on identifying a problem in their community and then figuring out a way of, of solving it with a real-world action. And I think the aftermath of this is they also get to see the behind-the-scenes of really what happens in our county government and being here tonight, which is, is awesome. And they have a presentation for you. And so with all of their due, I'm going to pass it on to Emily and that group. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I am the Horticulture Educator for the county and the surrounding panhandle. One of my duties within that is to coordinate the Master Gardener Program, which is a volunteer education, science-based knowledge, specifically around horticulture. As one of those components, volunteers are required to do at least 10 hours of community service every year. And this year Lori Zitterkopf, along with a couple of other master gardeners, worked with the 4H group to do a really cool project. And so I'm going to turn it over to them. I think they have everything prepared, but thank you for this opportunity. Good afternoon. As they mentioned, sorry. We were, we, the 4H kids from Scotts Bluff County were able to partner with the master gardeners to complete this project. And so this project is about butterflies. So in Scotts Bluff County, there is 89 species of butterflies and moths that call our county home for at least most or part of its life cycle. And insects such as butterflies and bees help us grow crops that help feed local animals and people, but they also help pollinate larger crops such as corn and soybeans that help feed our nation. And finally, they add a very visually pleasing look to our county. And over the years, the master gardeners have been tasked with designing a garden on the east side of this building. And this year, they decided to go with a prairie-style theme that features host plants of butterfly larvae. And we designed the gardens based on those papers that you were handed. And as the master gardeners realized that this was a really big task to take on, they decided to turn to 4H. So they came to us and offered us a service learning project where we could research about the different flowers and butterflies of, of the county and native to Nebraska. And we came up with this garden design. So these flowers are all native, well, flowers and grasses are all native. So these flowers are all native, uh, well, flowers and grasses are all native to Nebraska and came from the state, the Nebraska statewide arboretum. And, uh, it, it is an aim to help, um, educate the public about, uh, uh, the native butterflies to Scottsbluff County. But also to provide a, um, just a taste of what the natural beauty of Nebraska. And so we will go over a few of these different types of butterflies and their respective host plant. And first I will have Jake.
Before we, uh, move on ma'am, uh, Kelly, would you like their names or?
Yes, please.
All right, ma'am, if you'd give us your name.
Uh, my name is Justine Wilkinson, J U S T I N E Wilkinson, W I L K I N S O N.
Thank you.
Thanks.
First is Jake. Can you tell us, tell them your name?
Uh, yeah.
Jake Wilkinson. Uh, the last name is spelled the same as mine.
Okay.
What is your butterfly?
Uh, butterfly, uh, Magway.
It, the monarch, and then your host plant is?
A Magway, yeah.
And he has pins for each of you.
Right.
I'll go next. I'm Hunter Creach. Uh, Creach is spelled C R E E C H. Um, my flower is the Shasta Blue, which is, you can see on this frame, and its host plant is Milk Betch and Lupine.
My name is Brooklyn Creach, um, and my butterfly is the Eastern Tiger Swallow Tail. Its host plant is the Choke Cherry.
Thank you.
My name is Gage Creach. My butterfly is the Juniper Hairstreak and its, um, host plant is the Juniper Tree.
My butterfly is the Regal Futterary and its host plant is Violet.
And your name is?
My name is Paisley Clussen, C L L, C L O S S O N.
Thank you.
And my butterfly was the Common Checkered, Checkered Board Skipper and its host plant was the Purple Poppy Mallow. And, uh, along with these, we had a few other members that helped contribute to this project who were unfortunately unable to come tonight. Um, but this was a very, uh, great learning project for both us and the entire county. Um, with this garden, there's going to be signage around that educates the public about the different types of butterflies, the host plants, and these beautiful Nebraska natives. Uh, so in conclusion, this is been a really fun project, not just for the 4Hers who got to experience a 4H service learning project. But it has also helped us, um, help bring awareness to the importance of butterflies and provided an educational experience for the outward community. Uh, we hope you learned a little bit more about these butterflies and their host plants, and thank you. Are there any questions?
I have a question. I have a lot of, uh, Mallow, wildflowers. I, I let them grow. I like them. Uh, what butterfly is attracted to that? They're, they're, they're the kind of, they're kind of an orange blossom on these Mallow?
Um, yes, so the, um, checkered board, uh, the Common Checkered Board Butterfly likes the Mallow. I don't know if it's may, maybe it's just the Purple Poppy Mallow. I'm not quite for sure. But it is of the Mallow family, like they like those, um, types of plants. So it's really cool and very interesting.
Thank you very much.
I mentioned to some of you that came early that, um, 98% of the time when I come in, I come in through the back doors. And then sometime on the side doors, and rarely do I come in the front. I'll make it a point to try and come in the front in the near future. And, um, we certainly appreciate you being involved in 4H. Um, I've told, um, some of the other 4H leaders, Ms. Guzman especially, and some others, Mr. Irick, um, that how important 4H was for me. And, um, it's, it's a great program and we appreciate you being involved. And just 4H by itself, along with the leaders that you have, um, gives us projects like these, doesn't it? And, um, you guys are a big part of it, and we certainly appreciate what you do, um, to help make our courthouse look great, so.
Yeah, well, thank you for having us.
Yeah.
And you guys can come to the ribbon cutting on Friday as well.
Okay. And that's out here?
Yes.
Okay.
How are you advertising that ribbon cutting?
Lori Zitterkopf, we have had it on the Facebook page with the U N L and Extension. Um, it is on with, uh, the Nebraska Statewide Arboretum is also publicizing that. I don't know that I have any local publications yet.
Okay, we had somebody stop by our office last Friday, so I was wondering where to direct them. So I didn't know. It, it is this coming Friday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You should also know that I have a luncheon, that Lisa and I are attending a luncheon out at the Pennale Station this week. And we'll make sure that those powers-to-be know that you did a good job tonight.
Yes.
Okay?
Huge shout out to Lori.
Yeah, well, we appreciate it. Anything else? Any other comments? All right, thanks so much for being here. We appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, which is discuss and consider an amended contract for Tri-City Roadrunner to transition to TriSparks Novus DR with friendly fixed route software platform rather than upgrading their current Route Match platform. Kurt?
Okay, gentlemen, um, we've been working on this for, for five years now. And as you're aware of the state, um, they did an RFP almost five years ago. And they approved eight different softwares that rural transit agencies in Nebraska could use. And if they chose one of those eight, they would pay 100% of the upfront startup costs through, um, their funding. Um, so in that five-year period, Route Match has been acquired twice, originally by Uber. And, and that was horrible. It was a dumpster fire. And then subsequently TriSpark bought them out. And TriSpark owns numerous transit software platforms. Um, uh, back in April, I attended their Ignite User Conference. Um, and it was a joint, uh, conference, um, put on my TriSpark for both their Novus DR, which is demand response, and Route Match. Two years ago, when I attended this, right after the acquisition, they said they weren't going to sunset this product. After lengthy talks with them in April, they didn't say they were going to sunset it, but they did not say they weren't going to sunset it. They said, we're going to maintain it. We were not going to upgrade it. And, um, based on my background in business, to me, it does not make business sense for them to maintain these two softwares that do essentially the same thing. So what they're offering to do is give us their Novus DR platform with the friendly fixed route or fixed route for the same price as Route Match. And in the original RFP, it was nearly three times the cost. So they're willing to cut us a heck of a break on this. Is there a charge to smooth over there? The only thing to smooth over here that I had earmarked through the state, $65,000 in startup costs. That will cover all of the startup costs with this transition minus onsite training. Because we had Route Match before, we were going to be able to do all the training remotely, Zoom meetings, et cetera. This will not allow it. So Tom Coogan, their Vice President of Professional Services, who I deal with, and my sales rep Brendan Samas, discussed with all their folks, they came back with a figure, um, and it's an approximate figure. And the main trainer is based out of Denver. I've worked with her extensively through Route Match. She's now going to be doing, she would now be doing the training for the Novus platform. Um, we're looking at between 15,000 and 20,000 dollars for the onsite visits required to implement it, do all the onboard training, and then be here during the go-live when we actually turn this thing on. I do have 124,000 and change in my capital improvement budget. We did not get our ARP grant for shelters. Um, I had some of that earmarked for that. Um, I would rather take that money now and move to this new, uh, better platform. Um, we talked about some of the upgrades with, with Route Match being our notifications module, which only does phone calls. Uh, this platform allows us to do phone calls, SMS text messages, or emails. Um, and then we had Route Match requires two mobile apps. There's a mobile app for the fixed route and a mobile app for the demand response side. This is one mobile app that combines the two. So I, I think there's going to be some efficiencies built in there. The, the actual technologies are, um, very similar. But again, this is, this is kind of their Cadillac version. And the fact that they're offering it to us at that much of a discount for five years, um, to me, that sells me their, and they, they talked to numerous other people on Route Match. When I was there, we kind of had some small meet breakout sessions. And they were really pushing people to transition. So, um, I'd rather be upfront and get the good pricing than in five years, hey, we're sunsetting it and now here's your price for Novus. And it's the full, the full-blown price. What's your total cost? You're looking at to upgrade your? Uh, the, the training's going to be about 20,000. The original contract, um, startup costs, let me go to page 11 here. Uh, 10, um, startup costs is, uh, 57,695. And then I have some additional hardware we bought for, for, we have more licenses for our vehicles, so we need additional tablets and mounts. So I've got 65,000 earmarked from the state at no cost to us. It'll all be reimbursed. The total contract, including startup for five years, is just over 318,000 dollars. The county's portion of that is 10%, minus the 65, minus that original. So it's minus that startup cost. You gotta put, we have to pay the startup cost. No, that's 100% reimbursed by the state. The only thing I have to pay 100% of would be the train, onsite training, which is going to be around 20,000. And I do have that in my capital. About 50,000 what's going to cost the county for the full five years of the training? Yeah, yes, about with, when we do the 31,000, or 31,800 roughly is our 10% of the contract, plus the 20,000, we'd be in that 50,000 neighborhood. 58. For the, for the five-year contract. For the full five-year, is there any maintenance on any of that in between? Is there any monthly charge? Uh, we, that's, that's included in these prices. We get billed on a monthly basis and I submit that, we pay it, I submit it to the state, we get 90% of it back. So how much is, are those bills? At that, that's this 318,000, it's just incrementally billed out. Okay. Um, e- each month. So the monthly cost, we'd have to break down. The first year, um, is 35,500, then it goes up to almost 55, then 56, then 57, then 58. So you're going to have some money left in your budget and you'll have to apply that or reapply for next year then? Yes, I can use that in my capital expenditure budget. Um, staff reports, I'll give you another update on budgets, but, um, we'll go over that. But this, I, again, looking down the road in five years, I'll be close to retirement age. I don't want to have to transition to a new software, train a replacement for myself and do all that at one time within five years. And they're going to constantly upgrade this software and Route Match. It's very clunky already and it's not going to get any better. They're not, they're not going to do any upgrades. They're going to just maintain it. So, um, just seeking your approval to go ahead and use my capital expenditures funds to get them the okay for the training. They will send back, basically be an amended contract. Wording is all the same. They're going to change, change Route Match to Novus DR with their friendly fixed route option. Other than that, the contract will look essentially the same. And I can bring that to you for signature. Is that, everything sound the right way towards the money and everything? It's just money, right?
So let me ask, um, this evening, is there anyone from the audience that wants to talk about this? Hearing none, we'll go to the commissioners. Um, any other comments besides what Russ has already talked about? You know, the, um, because of all the money put in by the state, um, it makes it bearable. And, um, the, uh, with you having the money available to you for the, um, training, um.
And I still have enough for all my buses on order that in my cap funds, there's still many shortages there.
Right.
And these, this is one of the two, these are the only two softwares that were approved in the RFP that will do both demand response and fixed route within the same platform.
But because of all that, of course, it's, um, tolerable to me. And, uh, I'm, and obviously I don't know anything about the software, but we trust your judgment to, to have chosen the best that you know of, so I think that's good. Any other comments? All right. Entertain a motion.
I move that we, uh, approve the amended contract for Tri-City Roadrunner to transition to TriSparks Novus DR.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, um, to, um, approve the amended contract. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Yeah, four yeses.
Motion's carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, next item is discuss and consider action regarding limited special claim run, specifically travel, fund transfers, insurance, and utilities. Kelly? Or Lisa? Or both?
Well, I, the utilities is obvious, but I would like your help in this, fund transfers. And there's a couple of, um, workshops that are coming up in June. Perks treasures, perks of the District Court Register of Deeds goes with the perk one, but those are the items that I was putting before you for the limited.
Okay. So, uh, yeah, uh, Lisa, do you want to discuss that? And of course, these are, these are items that you want to get in this fiscal year.
Right.
Rather than next, and that's part of what, why we do this.
Yes, exactly. We have to do a health claims run because the health insurance wants to get, we want to get as much of the large claims paid this year. So we don't have to then pay a deductible again after July 1. So that's what we, thank you. We push to get a, a lot, I mean, RCI is making their calls right now to try to get claims that haven't come in that they know are coming. You know, that might be waiting for coding at the hospital or whatever. And we just have to get that all hold in, paid this fiscal year. Otherwise, we're going to have to meet another $80,000 deductible next year or up to. Get them all under this, this calendar year. And then, yeah, we have had, have a few people traveling right now. Then they would rather get it paid on this budget than next budget. That was some of the precipitous to the request.
And they meaning, uh, the department heads in those particular departments wanting the expense?
Better go to their workshops. This fiscal year rather than next.
Fund transfers?
Fund transfers, um.
Might be addressed with your.
Oh, well, if we are able to, like, if we find out at the end of May, we need another $50,000 in detention center, we can make that adjustment.
End of June.
Well, I mean, we, we don't know the status of that right now. Bus still owes money back to Keno and, um, Detention Center owes money back to, I'm trying to remember which funds, maybe Heather's sitting there. Uh, inheritance, they get those paid back if we're not, and we can make those corrections prior to fiscal year end. We have one more pay run to do that.
I seen we had in the claims some transfer of some funds this time.
Yeah, and last time for sure.
I think at this point after month end, what they were working on today, um, communications and the county bus are the only two that have outstanding on transfers. We were able to pay back the detention center.
And move some money from general to detention center. We do this because we get an influx of money in April, so that we can get everything kind of righted back up.
April, and you're talking real estate tax?
Yeah.
Income? Okay.
Anyway, so that's why we asked for another pay run because, and you're also ending fiscal year in by telling everybody, if you haven't gotten your bills by June 10th, you got to pay them next. you got to pay them in the next fiscal year. That's pretty early, you know, to close out a year. So this is giving us one more time to get those last bills that maybe show up on June 12th after the next claims run is due.
So this is talking about a limited special claims run. And what does that mean for us up here? Are you talking a special meeting to do that?
I would love for you to have one more meeting in June. I'm just saying, but there's many things that are happening.
Well, I'm sorry, next meeting's going to be...
Well, we're starting protest hearings in June too, just so you know.
So I know that, so when you say a special claim run, you're saying technically those things could be done at our next meeting in two weeks?
No, that's why we're asking for it, because the deadline is the 9th for the claims run on the 16th that will go before you. We're asking for another one after that.
Okay.
With a deadline to my office of the 23rd. Not if you let us do it, if you give us permission.
If we, what you're asking here is for us to approve those claims basically tonight with final approval or with dollar amounts to them, possibly to confirm that in first July meeting or something.
Potentially, but I'm thinking she...
I could still get you a preapproval list.
Haven't you pulled them in before the end of June to get them to sign off on the board preapproval report? You know how we did it before?
I can't remember. It seemed like we had either a special meeting or something that was towards the end of the month to help us out somehow.
We've historically had a special claims run. The problem would be that you guys would need to sign off on it possibly without an amount. I don't know how it works on the 16th. Can they, I don't know if you guys can approve it or that because if we were to wait for you to sign off on it June 30th, it would be, the claims wouldn't get run until July 1st, which is, we're trying to avoid. So if Kelly can do it on the 23rd, then we would be able to pay the claims out on the 24th.
Well, the...
How about we keep the deadline for the 23rd and we can call a meeting on the 27th?
I think, and I think that's kind of how we've done it before.
That's why I specified what I wanted to be able to pay out of my office on an extra run.
So you're saying the 23rd being the deadline, but then have them all, you're saying having a short meeting on the 27th?
Oh, I doubt it'll be short.
Well, if it's simply standard claims, then it should be fairly short.
I can tell you what else is coming up this month that has to be done by the end of the month. That are maybe some deadlines. If you don't have time, you can...
So Kelly's recommending that we, from our standpoint, have a special meeting on the 27th in an effort to approve those claims. And I know we've done that before. I know we've done it in an effort to help close out the fiscal year as late a date as possible in the month of June. And we've done that before. We've done it, in my opinion, we've done it several times.
If you've done it about every year, I'd have to have it for the health claims for sure.
Right. Yeah, normally, we're talking primarily about health claims. But it could be other issues as well. So I guess, is anyone else having any concern about that thought of having a special meeting on the 27th for a final list of claims? I think in the past, we've done it like at either 1 o'clock or 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And then that finalizes things down. Are you saying you think you can do that, Kelly? Is that what you suggested earlier? The meeting on the 27th?
I'm waiting for you guys to tell me. I do not want it on the 30th, period. I don't want it intermingled with payroll.
Yeah, oh, I see what you mean. That's a payroll day. Well, the 27th, I think is reasonable.
Well, it sounds like we're having a meeting for more than just for you to approve the claims that we're accepting.
Okay. What was that? I didn't hear that.
Lisa just asked for an extra meeting in June.
Oh, was that for something more?
We haven't got to that part yet.
Haven't got to that part?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll talk about it if I want to, but I can wait.
Budget, I bet.
Well, I could. Now we got to close out our stop loss for insurance. The audit needs to be closed out. I don't know if he can do it at the end of the month or if we'll have to go into July, but the audit has to be done by June 30th. It's two big things going on.
But we're talking about issues that are, that would be helpful to be dealt with or end of the fiscal year deadlines. And that's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. But there's still part of that. One of its, the special run of claims, but then a couple other items that are end of the month issues, end of the fiscal year issues, I should say.
Yes.
Okay.
Deadline issue.
Okay. And you could...
If I can bring him next meeting, that would be great.
Yeah, bring him to the next meeting, telling us when you, what you think needs to be on that, that meeting. And I get, obviously, if you have any of these things that can be dealt with at the next meeting, you would bring it to us and we'll deal with it then, right?
Yeah.
But for those things that are not able to be dealt with on the 16th, then we would have them on the 27th to finalize them. Okay, is what you're saying.
Hopefully, we can get them in the 16th. I just fear you're getting into a pretty long meeting.
Does anyone have a particular preference on time on the 27th?
Earlier the better.
Would 1 o'clock work for you, Mike?
Yeah.
Could we, does anyone have a problem with 1 o'clock on the 27th?
Are we going to be doing any property value protests at that time? Could we schedule some for that day? Will we be here any?
I can't remember on the list that you gave us, but if we are, we'll schedule some. We could, Kelly could take a look at that. We could like do some of those in the morning or something and then do the other meeting at 1 o'clock or something like that.
We have not opened that date up yet. We had 17th, 18th, 23rd, and 24th.
Well, I would only say that because we're coming at 1 o'clock, you could, but I wouldn't do it unless you felt you were going to need extra days. If we're going to need extra days...
I've had one protest filed so far, so it's hard to tell if we'll need it yet.
I wondered, did people get their notice?
They were mailed out Friday.
Right. So not very many would have got it in the mail yet.
I've only had one by the time I came up here filed.
I didn't get any at my office today.
They've been online for some time, haven't they?
Yeah. Yeah, if they understand, yeah, whether or not they're getting the inquiries, which they could look at online. They're just, is it a little yellow card? Is that the one that we get? What do we get?
We get a letter now.
Letter? Okay.
I don't know, I haven't got mine yet either.
So do you need a motion from us for this item or just a consensus?
So what will the motion be to approve having a meeting to approve those? Because I haven't had to have an extra meeting for this specific agenda item in the past. You've given us approval. You can tell what travel would be. Do you have an idea what your insurance, health insurance would be?
3,000.
And then utilities?
Well, so I'm not sure I'm understanding exactly the...
We didn't have an extra meeting last year for this purpose.
We didn't?
Not that I find.
I thought you had people come sign the document.
I would imagine I got verbals from, we got the okay to do it, and then I got the signatures after the fact at the next meeting is what I'm guessing.
Just depends how late the first, you know, the meeting went, you know, last year.
You tell me.
Well, I mean, from a legal standpoint, I don't know the answer to the question. Maybe Jason can help with that, but I guess...
Positively, I'll have a number for you on the 27th. I was hoping to have a number for you sooner than that.
Okay.
And then how long do we allow for it in case we do have more protests to schedule? What time do I start scheduling protests that day?
You mean on the 27th? If we did the 27th? I mean, we don't know how many protests you're going to have yet, so it's hard to tell, but to me, we could be as early as, you know, our normal time, which I think is what, 9 o'clock in the morning and then go up until the...
Well, the June ones, we were only running like 3 to 6.
Oh, I see.
Being done by 6.
I see. Right, so that's a good point.
I'm not using my microphone.
Yeah.
Did you hear me?
I didn't hear you.
I mean, the June ones, we were only putting 3 to 6 at this point.
Yeah, late afternoon, evening. Okay. All right, well, let's make some kind of a decision. But at this point in time, if we just simply say that we would plan on an extra meeting on the 27th at 1 PM, we don't have to have the agenda set in that motion, right?
Right.
That agenda stuff can be, it's going to be evolving somewhat as we go, I suspect. I would move that we plan an additional county commissioner meeting on June 27th at 1 PM.
I will second that.
And the purpose is to try and take care of some of the end of the fiscal year issues. Deadlines.
Will you read the agenda item? Do they need to approve us accepting those claims, the extra claims for an extra run? Discuss and consider action regarding limited special claim run. Do they need to take action on that besides scheduling the extra meeting so that I can accept them for the special meeting at all?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping and thinking because...
We did do this two years ago. If you recall, we had that NERMA presentation during a special meeting, and then we had other things that came up.
We've certainly done them before. I know that. All right, so we have a motion and a second to have an additional commissioner meeting.
Who was it? Who was it?
Me, I had the motion and...
I had the second.
Thank you.
And that's for June 27th at 1 PM. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have four yeses.
All right, motion's carried. All right, we'll start to plan for a meeting at that point in time with the intent being to deal with end of the fiscal year issues. Hopefully as minimal as possible, but whatever they are, they are.
Would you accept the audit that day? If he would present that day?
It wouldn't work today.
Yeah, no.
Was that?
I'd prefer not to either. Yeah. Okay, so that takes care of that item on the agenda. We're going to the next one, which is discuss and consider NERMA deductible options. Lisa?
This was included in your packet, all the NERMA documentation that came out last, in an email last Thursday or Friday. I don't remember which day we received it. I put together a spreadsheet comparing last year's numbers to this year's numbers. And we're increasing by $130,000 over last year for our coverage. Most of the, it's not necessarily all property as we've experienced the last two years and been trying to manage that. It's more down to the auto physical, auto liability, workers comp, and law enforcement are each up 32, 27, 20%, and 21%. I guess general liability as well. Any questions on that before I move on?
Our physical auto is fairly high. We've had several vendors direct, I guess, but a lot of those were not actually the county's fault, right?
They weren't, but you know, it kind of sometimes bears on you, even when it's not your fault.
It wouldn't be bad to take another look, ask those guys on that. I mean, like I said, we, I know that talking to our guys, a lot of the racks weren't exactly our fault.
Well, and then there's a lot of, we, I brought this to you a few months ago. We are considered a high-risk county. We've been taking some steps. They don't call it high risk, but we have a high-risk...
Premium rate.
Yeah. And we've been working on some safety initiatives around here with our safety committee. And I know Steve took a proactive stance regarding trying to better the safety levels, which has been really good. And I would say the last four months, it's really shown. So, and same with transit bus, and I'm sure he's always pushing safety. We just got to...
We have a lot of exposures, which, you know, we're not so much high-risk, we have a lot of exposure.
We do, yeah. When he's out on there, buses are on the street all day and sheriff and the roads and...
Take Rose, has probably 30 vehicles on the road at any given time.
Yep.
Well, and I understand that we have a lot of exposure, but we certainly ought to be able to be as safe or claim-free as others, meaning at least in the mid-range. And if not, why not? And I'm sure that the safety committee's talking about that, right?
Right.
But we should at least be able to be towards the mid-range and not at the bottom. I would hope.
Working to improve. So, and if you read, there's a letter in the packet of information. And NERMA provides a lot of training as well to help us with our safety initiatives as well. NERMA devotes a great deal of time, attention, and resources towards many training and educational efforts designed to reduce and limit claims and losses, thereby lowering costs. So, and they give us some incentives to, you know, to meet. And we get different little, I mean, if we meet with our safety committee quarterly, turn in our agendas and our minutes, we get another $500 back. You know, that means we're meeting. We are doing, we are reviewing the issues. We have a very comprehensive form every time there is an incident that's filled out by the employee and their supervisor, our safety committee chair, and that's all turned into NERMA as well.
And I appreciate that. And I realize, you know, I see in the NERMA newsletter that, you know, counties getting awards for no claims and whatever. And I can't imagine our county, at the size that we are, that we're going to be a county with zero claims on any given month, let alone, especially when compared to smaller counties with one-fourth or one-tenth maybe the employees sometimes. And so I understand that it's not comparing apples to apples, so to speak. I assume we're trying to do the best we can, but when we compare to others that are the same or similar size to us, we ought to be able to be at least mid-range or better, I would think, because we're trying so hard, right?
Right.
Okay.
I had those numbers a few months ago. I did not bring that with me, you know, what their ratings were compared to our comparable counties. Anyway, just wanted to put this in front of you so you knew where, where we're at. I have not calculated the airport's portion of the airport coverage yet. I know Cheryl will be asking me about that, but total of insuring all those buildings went from a hundred thousand, five thirty-one to a hundred and seven thousand, of which they will pay us back a portion. What that portion is, it's probably gonna be somewhere in forty-five to fifty thousand per the agreements and discussions we've had.
We have an increase every year on that agreement. Is it every year or every five?
It is an ever-evolving thing. Depending on when their buildings, they can re-up their leases, remember? Cause they, they, they do five-year, ten-year, twenty-year leases. So they can't renew in the, in the interim is what we're told.
So, you mentioned that the premium is about a hundred and thirty thousand higher than it was before?
Yes, that's the change column.
Right, and so just, again, we're talking, um, our overall premium is about nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, right?
That's what I will be paying to NERMA at the first check run in July.
Right, and we pay it in a lump sum in advance, is their terms.
We pay it one time a year. We don't go paying additional for every car we buy. Or if we, if we take something off the policy, we don't get a refund. If this is a one-time square-up deal. I had to turn in a whole lot of information in January regarding our fleet and what all we have and making, what all assets we have. Do we have all of our cars listed? Do we have, maybe there were some I could take off? So I was doing a lot of adjusting back then and had department directors helping me go through their lists as well.
Do they ever give you a breakdown of what they pay out over a year for all these items or what, you know?
I've got reports, you mean just on our behalf?
Just on, just on what you have listed here, do they give us a report on all those items where you have...
I can get lots of reports.
It'd be interesting to see just what they, they paid out in the last few years.
Oh, yes.
Maybe you can make them available to us.
Yes.
I'd like to see that. You know, it's a problem.
Yeah, and you know, there's been some larger work comp claims that we've dealt with.
So as part of your question here tonight about the deductible options?
Yes, now, that was why I bring this to you. Okay, so they offer us a little bit of a discount for these three layers of coverage. So it's not on everything. So like your auto physical damage, when our vehicles are in an accident, we could go instead of paying fifty-two thousand, seven thirty-seven, which I did not go and compare the numbers that they gave me here, we could pay forty-seven, eight eighty-five. And go from a thousand dollar deductible to a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. And again, from twenty-five to five thousand, I put in my little, my copy, the difference is four thousand, eight fifty-two to go from one thousand to two thousand, five hundred. We turned in five claims during twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-three, twenty-four. We turned in eight claims under this category. So same thing with mobile remote, if we would increase our deductibles, we can get a little bit of a reduction in what we have to pay for premiums. And then you can see with the property building right now, if we would have hail claims tonight,
Oh, yeah.
Two thousand, five hundred dollar, I think it's per building. I mean, it's, it's low, 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 you gotta, you gotta admit that. But to go to five thousand, we have thirteen, it would be a thirteen thousand, nine fifty-eight reduction. And we have, we haven't turned in any property building claims the last two years. And I'm gonna say, I did just turn one in for the airport. They're having some issues with their HVAC systems in the main terminal. If I use the wrong verbiage, I'm sorry, but they have like several on the building and they're having electrical surges or something going on. Did you hear about this at any of the meetings? There, they told me to turn it into insurance because it's taken out some of their rooftop HVAC. Does that make sense? I'm sorry, you guys, I was... So, we could have some savings that way if we would, I don't think that would be all bad to change our, do our property building content.
You want to increase it to five grand on some of those?
It would be property building contents, all for our buildings, it would be a reduction of thirteen thousand, nine fifty-eight to increase fourteen thousand? From three, twenty-five hundred to five thousand per incident. I don't think that would be a bad thing, so we haven't turned that many claims in, but...
We have had a hail for about three or, three or four years, that'd be bad. If we get some bad hail, we'll be up to eyeballs.
But maybe we should leave it alone.
I don't know, it's worth a look, it's worth a look.
You know, well, and that's what she's asking tonight.
I do, but I...
I have to...
Where do you normally run with your properties, Mark? Do you run five grand?
Oh, you know, um, you know, on our residential properties that are valued in the four hundred, five hundred thousand range, I think our, our deductibles are probably five thousand now. We looked at these numbers, they gave us numbers a year or two ago.
We do it every year.
And they were ridiculously um...
Low, they weren't, wasn't much of a spread, wasn't worth it.
Thinking about, yeah, there was hardly any spread.
Fourteen thousand isn't worth it on this real deal.
Well, yeah, for four percent.
Three claims is what, well...
How's that least?
I, I was saying that'd be three different claims.
Be three, yeah, two and a half claims.
Three percent uh, difference is all. It was, the difference two years ago was minimal. I mean, it was a no-brainer. We didn't even have to think about it and said, why would we do that?
This isn't a lot better.
Right.
That's true. I don't think you'd wanna change the auto physical.
With the number of uh, buildings that we have scattered around, we got buildings all over. Even a lot of them at the airport, that they're not insuring and we're still taking care of several out there. I don't even know how many buildings we take care of, but it's gotta...
We take care of all their buildings, or buildings, not the contents, right?
Well, yeah, they're just reimbursing us on that, right?
On most of them, remember?
Kind of a pass-through, so we insure them all. You're right, we do insure them.
We do insure them all?
You're right.
Cause we were taking off some T-hangers and then they put them back on.
They did? But they're gonna leave them on?
No, because what if the tornado blows them away? Then they gotta replace them. And if they have, don't have them on our policy, they're not gonna get them replaced.
Yeah, but they don't have enough value on them to where they're gonna pay them anything anyway. Huh?
I can pull that information up, what we have for value. Cause remember I brought that a few months ago too, that they say we're very undervalued in the value, what they would need.
That's what we felt they were really undervalued. Cause I, I listen to them out at the airport as well when I'm in those meetings. And I know they had the value way down on those T-b buildings, or T-hangers.
Do you have any specific recommendation here?
I mean, do I have a recommendation? The only one, I would look at that property building, but like you said, one big hailstorm could just... Just we, we could, no, I don't have a recommendation. This is kinda how our discussions went the last couple of years as far as...
Wherever we get hail, if we get hail at the airport, it's gonna take out fifteen buildings up there. Fifteen times twenty-five doesn't work out.
Yeah, and then you have a limit to how many times they're going to bill that out per incident. And it might just be once per incident, so then, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't have that off the top of my head, but I don't. So...
You're talking about it, one deductible per incident?
Yes, every occurrence, every building's a deductible.
Well, I know, but yeah.
But I'm saying there's...
You know, it, well, yeah, normally it's every building per occurrence.
Per occurrence, so...
Right, so you may get two hailstorms in a year.
Yeah, you could.
And um, and so um, is a deductible amount per occurrence per building. Now, there are some, there used to be, we used to have a policy that was um, one deductible for twenty-five buildings.
For this, for this county?
Uh huh, no, not in the county. I'm talking personal business stuff.
I don't think I ran that road.
And that worked really good, but it went away.
It worked too good.
It worked really good on a big hailstorm.
Yeah.
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 But yeah, we don't get that. In fact, I hate to say it, but um, and I hate to think about it in a, uh, public buildings, but um, I just talked to an insurance, I called him somewhat of an authority just the other day. And he said, you can't believe the number of people that are self-insuring anymore. And um, I think we're, it's a little scary with public property.
If you rent it out, it does.
Yeah, and you know, and just, um, but um, he said, there's lots of people on their own residential house that are self-insuring anymore. People with um, commercial properties that...
What we encounter, which we don't encounter this here, you have roof damage. And then if it's, you fixed your roof, what, five years ago? And then you, they say to replace it's this, but you already have to take off that depreciable cost, depreciable portion. So for your private, it sometimes doesn't pay very well.
Many of the policies now are saying that um, damage to a metal roof or damage to gutter or damage to any metal trims of any kind is a simple cosmetic um, damage and they don't cover. And so not only are all the premiums going up, but the actual coverage is going down.
Coverage is going down.
And um, you, we have lots of people unhappy with those things. And so that insurance person was saying, we see more and more people looking at self-insuring. If they have any kind of financial assets at all, we see them doing that. Um, if their properties aren't mortgaged, if they're mortgaged, their banks require them to have insurance. But anyway, um, I guess from the numbers I'm seeing, um, I'm not... I, I think the only way you can compare it is to say, um, hmm, so we've had X amount of claims kinda average over the last three years. We look at those claims with certain deductibles. You know, what will those look like compared to what, what it's saving us?
It doesn't take long to put fourteen thousand dollars back in the kitty by, by staying with where we're at, by lowering deductible.
Three buildings damaged.
Well, what it does as well, by lowering that deductible twenty-five hundred dollars, now if you had forty-five hundred dollars damage, you, you don't have a claim. It eliminates the chance of you getting a claim, but if you leave it at twenty-five hundred, at least they're gonna pay something.
Like a garage door breaking or something, yes.
We're, we're currently at a thousand, right? I think we're at twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, see there's N-A in the thousand dollar call for property building.
But didn't we have a thousand this past year?
Yes, we raised it last year.
Oh, last year.
Are you talking about property?
Property.
They took it away themselves.
They took the deductible.
They, they took the thousand out.
It's no longer available.
It's not even an option, so...
So same story. More money, less coverage.
I guess that's what we left in place because it wasn't a big enough change for the thousand dollars.
Me too. All of us need to talk into the mics.
What?
All of us need to talk into the mics. Well, I'm, I hate to say it, but I hear something out there.
Oh, great.
Rain or something. I guess I, my personal thought process here and what we're talking about is, they've already bumped you from a thousand to twenty-five hundred on the property.
For property building.
Right, and that may be about all we can handle maybe this time. And I guess I'm, I don't have a problem leaving them the way they are, meaning the lower deductibles. That's mine.
No, it's fine.
It's, they've never, it doesn't seem like they give that much of a break in the premium.
Not really.
All right.
Large hail.
Yeah, so, any, yeah, anyone interested in getting weather right now, so...
Well, now we're in the safest place to be in Utah.
My pickup is it.
Yeah, I know. I already got hailed that many times.
Speaking of, I wonder what I'm driving to Kearney.
All right, does that answer your question? Do we need action on anything? You, you got directions for us?
We really don't need action on that.
We're gonna leave it the same, right?
Yes.
All right, let me get my agenda back out here. Next item is discuss and consider approval of resolution, resolution for loan of Keno lottery funds. Lisa?
Um, we have three of them. We present them about this time every year. This, this helps the treasurer when a fund is in the red. She can't, she can't finalize her month with a fund in the red. And you know, we have what, forty funds? Twenty-five, whatever? So we can move, we typically, typically have money in each of these three funds, the capital improvement, inheritance and Keno, that we can temporarily loan to the fund that's in red. I'm asking that you approve this once again.
And then we get paid back and then somebody gives us a report almost monthly that tells us who owes what from the transfers.
So anytime we have a fund that's negative, um, I try and borrow from the Keno funds first and then inheritance tax and capital improvements, only if the other two funds are used up as far as the borrowing capacity goes.
Cause we said, we set a limit.
Yeah, we do set a, we do set a limit. And so if a fund has enough money to pay the, the money back, then we do a journal to pay it back. But this resolution lets us to continue to be able to close month-end. It helps us with funds that, our grant funds that are waiting for money to come in. A big one that we've had this last year has been the um, homeland fund. Um, but they were able to pay all of their money back as of today. So it just helps us cash flow, I guess.
And in all of these, um, the commissioners have to be notified and...
Um, I give you a report of them every single month to let you know.
But this, this is notified as these loans occur.
Yes, so...
As an agenda item.
It's in your consent.
And I know we normally get it, so... But yeah, I think that's the main thing is that we know about it.
Since we started doing them.
Since we started, yeah, letting them know.
Okay. So these are the ones that we do every year and have done for years and years. And I, I think it's certainly a, a good thing to be able to do. Um, as long as, um, I love the fact that we get notified and then you give us that report that shows who owes what to what fund. And um, then some of them show they're paid off and that's helpful to me.
Do you need approval on each account then, Lisa?
Yeah, you're gonna...
Each resolution, yeah. We have a resolution for each one. So uh, any discussion on this otherwise?
I think we're good. We do it all the time.
Right. So do we have a motion on this first resolution for the special revenue fund?
I'll move to approve the resolution for loan of Keno lottery funds.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have four yeses.
All right, so that motion's approved. Go to the next item, resolution of loan of inheritance tax.
I'll make a motion of loan of inheritance tax, second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have four yeses.
All right, motion's carried. Go to the next item, which is the resolution of loan of inheritance, no, of capital improvement funds. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the resolution for loan of capital improvement funds.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Mark? You have four yeses.
Motion's carried. All right, that takes us down to the next item of discuss and plan formation of a budget committee. Lisa?
Well, I'm gonna ask you again. We talked about this about a month ago. I think it would be beneficial to have a budget committee since you guys are gonna be very busy with your property tax protest meetings in the next six weeks. If I could have, I don't know when you, we fit this in, but just have two of you and me and whoever else on a, to start preliminarily looking through this and having a really good understanding of how the money's flowing and how we're working, making the budget work. So that we can walk in without me explaining everything, that maybe you, if you understand from me, you can explain to, if Mike was on my committee, he could explain better to Russ in words. He would be more consistently understanding of. And I know I was told um, before that you just wanted it to be all of you. I'm just hitting a point where I'm not gonna have time to get much in front of you, all five of you scheduled in the next six weeks. Otherwise, we're gonna just do like we did before and we have our budget meetings in August and move ahead from there. So I guess I wanted some ideas. So, I guess I wanted some ideas.
Well, I like the idea of a reduced budget committee with maybe just two commissioners and yourself. Because you get too many people involved, there's a lot of extra talking goes on and it really slows down what we're accomplishing. So, I'm a big fan of a committee, a small committee to do this.
And maybe you wouldn't have to always be the same two. It could be, you know, two to do roads and two to do deta-, I mean, I, you, two for the courthouse.
Yeah, those people that are more like the liaison for those department heads or something would be a good person to be on that, plus another one. Yeah, I think those could be doable.
If you aren't already meeting with your department heads before they submit a budget. I guess I don't know that you are, so.
Yeah, I've been with one of mine and we have his budget ready.
And what?
We have his budget ready.
Okay, was that Matt?
That, no, it's emergency manager.
Oh, emergency manager, yes.
I gotta meet with Matt.
What's that?
I'm gonna meet with Matt Shorten.
Oh, are you? Yeah, you can see when he turned, he turned something, he was like my first person.
We talked earlier.
I, I think many times, I think you're probably as aware of anybody as anybody is and that's, some, some of our budgets are more controversial than others. Some of them are kind of cut and dried and I'm not to say that, you know, I think still they should be maybe looked at with at least one commissioner, especially if it's a liaison or something. But there's many, there are some of those departments that normally don't get a whole lot of scrutiny and some of them they get a lot of scrutiny. And those, I think, would need to, those that get more scrutiny need to be looked at. Two people and then that may be that it ends up in front of all five of us if it's a major issue. We could start, if we can get past it with two, that'd be great.
And your, how are your prop-, I guess Kelly will be telling me too, or how the protests are, they're not nine AM to nine at night so much, you're trying not to do that.
In June.
In June, we're meeting in the afternoons.
So maybe if I started getting some of you in, the last week, we could do in first July or something, we could start getting, just have a meeting with the commissioner, the department head, me.
Right, that might be doable.
I don't really like, I think, I think department heads and the commissioner liaison is a good start. But I think those larger budgets and especially for the elected, the elected offices needs to be the full.
I don't disagree, just a prelimin-, a first run-through would be helpful, I think, for maybe some of you. But yeah, they still need to be viewed by everyone and discussed, especially when there's extra needs in the fiscal year maybe that might be coming up.
Right, and I think in percentages of difference from the year before, might also-
There you go.
To say, hey, that needs to go in front of the commissioners with an explanation or something. Where if they're minimal increase or very little increase, then those are gonna be more palatable for most of us.
All right, I'll start putting, getting some ideas and start getting some schedules going cause I think this might help us.
How about anybody that lowers their budget below what they last year, they don't need to come before?
No, depends on what they were. I think you need to look at the last two to three years.
Sometimes there's a few, few things that, where we would say, well, yeah, we expected that to happen. You know, and, but I know what you're saying. Right, it's a good thing. And again, they're gonna be less scrutiny if, if they come in that way.
Cause I know two that are already below last year by a lot ways.
Yeah, but I think you need to look at the last four, five years cause maybe they were elevated last year.
I agree.
Right. Yeah, there may be more to it then.
They're still lower than the year before, which what we did the prior, previous years, we'd say, we'll put three percent on your last year's budget. They've cut their budget, we're in a lot better shape than that, three percent to their last year budget. So this is still the better deal.
Well, well, for example, roads should, could be lower because we gave them ARPA money to do the bridge.
No, that, yeah, that ARPA money didn't even go into their budget, that was a whole nother. That was beside the budget.
They, they got capital improvement bill money to do Steeble Road and now our capital improvement money is drastically low compared to what it's been. So, but we got a big project done. That was, that's what you need to do, but we just can't do those very often.
But that wasn't in the budget, that wasn't, roads isn't what I'm talking about.
Microphone, Russ. We can't hear you. But I can tell you too, that mean, that might work for some, but I mean, I got, keep yours down to two and a half percent to a point where I can't, I can't live with my budget. I will be coming to you with an adjustment because of things that happened this year for my own budget. And I know that's happened to two or three others. Kelly had unforeseen things happen, so I mean-
Couple of things I wanted to talk to you about.
But when you're already at so low, things, you gotta, we gotta be watchful of that. But if there's some that were higher and lost a person, of course they're lower. And we didn't replace them. Anyway, that's just my point there.
Those are good things.
So does this, so did our discussion take care of both of those items or just one item on the?
I think you are okay for both of them. If you're saying I can have some small groups and you'll work with me on that and let's see how this works out this year.
Okay. Let us know what you need from us.
Yeah, unless, I might ask you later of, like, cause I think we need to have some small groups with the courthouse departments, that would, and who would want to sit with me on some of that? So, anyway, that's just one. And the admin building people and, anyway. It'll be evolving, but that's, it's a good start, so.
I think at some point before we start all of that, this board needs to come up with goals. We, we cannot operate without goals. We go in there without goals, we don't get, we don't get results. So, again, I'll just say we need to, we need to put on an agenda at some point prior to all these meetings taking place, even the subcommittee meetings. I mean, this, this group needs to come up with three or four goals to kind of guide the budget process for all of it.
Can we discuss that on the twenty-seventh, June possibly?
That's what I was just thinking.
Just, just touch on it, we don't have to make, no, that's what-
No, 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 we can't just touch on it, cause we've touched on it enough times. We need to, we need to-
On a, on a previous meeting.
Third or fourth time Charlie's asked for you guys to come with those.
Right.
I believe.
And when we come, when we come and, whenever we discuss it next, whether it's, in my opinion, two weeks or the meeting of the twenty-seventh, we need to come with real numbers. Charlie came prepared with real numbers last time and we didn't.
But the only, it can't always be cutting, we have cut and cut and cut. You gotta make sure you're covering your operations. I'm gonna just throw that out there. I mean, you keep saying lower levy, lower levy, only, only go up two percent when everybody's due for a four percent on the wage scale, what? And then you wanna say, and let's put on a three percent hold. I can't keep my budget to two and a half percent with all that going on. But what am I giving up? I don't advertise for positions, I don't buy paper anymore?
Hiring, hiring freeze, there's, there's a lot of options.
That doesn't affect my budget, but hiring freeze and wood, I guess, if you're not hiring lawyers. Did you see my email to you all with that Zelle thing?
What, I need to talk to you about that.
Or should we save that for later?
Go ahead, I wanna talk to you. It isn't your deal, but I wanna know. I have one question. How long do we get to try this person out before that bill's due?
What?
Huh?
Well, we had one.
So let me just say, we're not-
We don't.
In that, let's discuss that when we get down here to-
Board and staff, maybe?
Board and staff reports.
We're pretty much there.
Right, well, not quite, but I'm ready to get there soon as we can.
Okay, good.
I thought I had a six o'clock baseball game, but I think it got rained out.
Maybe it's not raining, it's got sleet. Is that where you're going?
No, it's actually in Geering, where it's at. So I think it's done.
Okay, I'm just staying here.
Okay. Yeah, so the next is old business, time clock plus and payroll processes. Any new information there?
Charlotte has been working very hard. Charlotte, our payroll coordinator that is now staying, is working hard to, kind of taking it off. There wasn't much I could do next and I was putting it off, so she's taking it and trying to see what she can do to integrate. And we're finding the files that they built aren't necessarily integrating and she's, we've got two or three people escalating it, so we're, we're pushing it out. We're pushing forward.
Okay.
So, anyway, now I can-
Let's go to the next part, public comments. Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items or discussion at a future board meeting. Board will not take action on comments presented this date. Is there any public people here that would like to comment on anything? All right. So not seeing any, we'll proceed to the next item, which is board and staff reports. Normally start with staff. Anyone back in there? All right, you got something Troy? All right, thanks. Kurt, come on up.
Per conversation with Lisa Audit, folks from Dana Cole were in our office today doing their part, pulling our records and our, our information. Hope to have that wrapped up by the end of the week with them. Should have our reimbursement form in March coming in here in the next few days. A lot of the staff at N D O T's been tied up, tied up with these operating agreements, so a little slower on approval. I'll have April ready to submit as soon as they're done and we get approved, second tier approval for March. And going forward by August fifteenth, I have to have June submitted, which it usually takes that long to get bank statements, et cetera. We've come up with some workarounds to make it a little faster. But they, they won't have all that done. Budget. My intent is to present my county budget per my original operating agreement that you signed off on for the state, the two-year, which I sense to make up two years' budget for the county and I combined that for the state. They came back to me a week and a half ago, two weeks ago and said, we don't have that kind of money for the next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-five. Cut thirty percent. I didn't even grow thirty percent. But, so I did and it, it's not enough to get me through the year. They just paid their final invoice for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four to a transit agency or some carryover for this current fiscal year. And once these are all paid for this fiscal year, they should have carryover for next fiscal year. They don't know how much at that point. They'll prioritize based on hopefully growth. We're at twenty percent growth year over year on number of trips. I pushed that on them, I said, you know, I don't wanna reduce services, I don't wanna turn people away. We're busy, we're growing, and I'm trying to do it within my budget. So the plan is for them, once they know how much additional funding they have, is to do a supplemental agreement. I pared back what I pared, what I could pare back and I was still well short of the six hundred and twenty thousand dollars I had to cut. A lot of that's payroll. It's about three months of payroll, so I'm, I was kind of freaking out, but they said, we, we'll take care of it, we'll take care of it, make sure. But there's a few things that we had hoped to do that I'm, I'm not probably gonna be able to do unless they come up really close to that number again and still maintain adequate service. I was looking at doing a small increase, which I was gonna fund with additional revenues, not dipping in more tax asking. Pretty much what I'm, my plan is, is to submit my budget to Lisa based on what my original budget was and go from there. Tax ask's gonna be right in that, where it's going to be. And then I'm hoping come September, October, they've got additional funds to do a supplemental agreement to help us for the rest of the year.
If it don't come, what are we gonna do? Can we cut, you're gonna be able to cut back from September?
We're gonna have to do some cutbacks in, in ours. Payroll's the big one. Fuel, we're helping save fuel with this, this bid. I do, we do need to lock in a new price on that.
What's your fuel doing now?
I think we're about rock bottom. Jay just bought this last, just off the rail. And what'd he got for?
Two fifty-seven.
Two fifty-seven, I think, but most of the folks he talked to said, we're pretty much at rock bottom right now. I'd rather have a number locked in, we may not hit bottom, but at least I can calculate an accurate number without shooting way back up and give me a much more accurate number.
I don't think we're at the bottom yet. OPEC's just talking about increasing supply.
And that's, that's a decision for, the one thing we could do is we can go ahead and do an R F P and at least get the numbers and you can reject it if you, if you think we're not at the bottom.
How long was ten thousand gallons last year out there?
Uh, it's about five, six weeks.
That's it?
No, and they're filling that thing quite a bit.
So.
So you're saying what, about sixty cents a gallon it sounds like, approximately?
Yeah, I, I could, I could see, they just, I had to talk to Jay, they had fuel delivered Friday and I was gone.
Plus you're getting thirty five.
But they only delivered five thousand gallons, actually, they must have recalculated. They only showed five thousand gallons, so we just delivered Friday, we're, we're already down to eighty-one hundred and twenty-two gallons, so. Anyway, but I, that's my plan for my budget is just submit it as I'm fully funded through the state. And then if I don't get fully funded, there's gonna be cost savings at the end of my budget cycle cause we're gonna have to pare way back. So, just wanna keep in the loop on that. They will be bringing an agreement with the reduced funds for me to have you, you look at and sign. They're putting all that together now and then, once they know if there's extra carryover, they'll do a supplemental that I'll bring to you to get me back up.
If it's-
What's the ridership when we look at fixed routes versus demand response?
It's right at fifty-fifty right now. Between the deviations we do, it fluctuates forty-eight, fifty-two, vice versa. And we're seeing more and more stop to stop. And, and we're hoping to be able to, those deviations do put our drivers behind and then with this detour that is over at the end of the week, it, it puts them a little behind, so we're hoping to eventually get to a point where the deviations are much reduced and we're just getting enough stop to stop passengers. And demand response countywide, we're, so we're at twenty percent growth year over year right now. But projected by the end of the year, we'll be at forty-four to forty-five thousand trips ballpark for the year. Last year we did thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirteen. So, significant growth, we've been, we've been hoping it this year. So, anyway, just wanna keep in the loop on that, that it's, could get potentially ugly, so.
All right, thanks. So I guess let's start over here. Jason, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, Lisa, anything further?
Yeah. Regional governance, you already mentioned, is Wednesday out of, you have input station. We're working on our audit, gotta get that done this month. And I think I already mentioned that. If we don't get it, we'll get completed, but we might have, oh, thank you. Yeah, if we don't get the audit completed, we will, well, we will get the audit completed, but if we don't get it presented, it might be presented in July. And I'm working on, with an insurance broker on some potential new insurance options. R C I has not come back with their stop-loss quote and I'm told that it's because they didn't like what they got. So when I asked, what did you get? You know, last year we increased our spec stop-loss claim, our deductibles up from sixty thousand to eighty thousand. First run, a hundred and twenty thousand, which is, oh goodness. We've had some bad claims for the last two years, we were hitting a rough patch. So, anyway, we're gonna see what, what our options, where our options are, so. Insurance is scary. And I was just gonna mention again, budget amendments will be in the next meeting to be, before the fiscal year end. And I know of about three or four that we're gonna be presenting, they're all, all within the general fund, so, anyway. Do I have to be included in it? What's that? If I need you? Do I have to be included if I need their approval? Yeah, you're part of it. I mean, like an agenda item separate or how do, how does it run? It's a general agenda item, it's not like a special budget hearing unless it's one of the funds. Okay. And you'll just, we'll say which funds are needing- And for what purpose or, I mean, okay. Yeah, we have to have some explanations of what, what went awry. Okay. You know, why, why are budgets- What went awry? What wasn't planned, why, why are we in the- What was so unexpected? Yes, yeah, well, that's what it's all about. Okay. Yeah. That's what I had. Yeah. So, that's what I had.
Okay. Russ, or, yeah, let's go to you.
Well, my meetings are tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday.
No, I'm dead. I don't wanna talk to you.
All my new meetings are tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday. I was gonna tell you about the bridge, but Steve Baird took care of that, so the bridge is gonna open up. Isn't that nice? I'm gonna be glad to see that open. I don't really have anything else. Everything's running smooth.
Mike?
I had an extension board meeting last week and went very well. You can see by the enthusiasm of the kids, that's kind of what I experienced out there at my meeting. I did attend the Stitula Open House, as they called it. And honestly, I was very disappointed. The way they organized their open house was they divided people up into groups. And they had their so-called consultants that were supposed to be knowledgeable of their particular area. And by dividing the people into like five and six-person groups, you could not hear other questions that people were presenting. And I was talking to the head guy and I asked him one question and he did not answer that question. He just kept talking in circles. So I was a little disappointed on that. And I knew three of the consultants and very disappointed their lack of knowledge. And in talking with an individual in the electrical utilities around here, their transmission lines cannot handle the extra energy produced by the solar project.
They've told us out here in the meeting.
And, but like say, I was like say, just, I was a little dis- I was extremely disappointed because I never really got any questions answered with facts. It was always estimate this or that. An example was jobs provided by this project. 225 jobs at three, an average of $31.25 an hour. But those jobs would only be available for 12 to 18 months and then they're gone. So there were just a lot of questions that I couldn't get answered. And like I say, I, I wish they would've had everybody in the group so I could hear this person's questions and this person's questions, but they, it was by design, 'cause I've seen this tactic used before, where you divide the people so that they're not organized, they can't hear other questions. And so I think, in my opinion, that open house was just done to satisfy a requirement. And I honestly felt that most people that went there could not get their questions answered. And that's just my opinion. So it was a little disappointing.
Okay. Anything else, Mike?
No, that's about it.
Okay. My stuff, Lisa mentioned regional governance. We have that Thursday, I believe. And we have a county personnel board meeting, is that Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday.
That's Thursday as well. And those are the two things that I can remember off the top of my head. Yeah, so I'll say that's it for now. Charlie?
I went to the open house also. It was originally set up as a classroom and then the, and, and so the, the group or the people visiting could ask questions to be heard by everyone. Then they quickly divided the room and broke people into groups so that, like Mike described, they could keep, keep questions isolated and not have, that way everybody there couldn't hear everybody's questions. There were, there was one station in particular where they were talking about national defense issues. And I asked a question relevant to national defense. And the lady who was standing at that board and, and leading that group, she said, well, I'm an environmentalist. I'm not a, I'm not a defense person, so I don't know how to answer your question. And it was, it was a very, I guess, it, they left a lot to be desired. You know, I was hoping for a much different format. I was hoping for a much different results or information to be shared. A lot of the questions that we had the last time still are not answered. On one board, they told us construction at the end of 2026. On another board, they told us construction at the end of 2027. I just left there with more questions than I had before I got there. So that was what I learned there. Our requirements are that they only have one of those. I thought our requirements was that they have two of those. That they were going to take what they learned from this last one and present something different at the second one. That's not what we wrote into our regulations, so.
You know, one thing we omitted in those regulations, I think, is that we don't have anybody to police this other than Billy Maven. And we never even nominated him in that, in the regulations.
You know, it'll be interesting to see what they, 'cause part of the town hall is that they were supposed to write down every question that's asked and provide a written answer to each of those questions. At least that's what they told us they were going to do. We haven't seen those answers yet. So, we haven't seen the questions yet. There was also a question about if, if that electricity would flow east. And, and we were told, yeah, probably, maybe. And when they were here over a year ago, there was no question, the electricity was not going to flow east. It was only going to flow west. So and this, and this was from the, they're saying that, and he's the head guy.
Is that important?
I, I think it, I think it goes to show that they're not, they're not, they're not being forthcoming. I don't think they really know the, the details of their own project.
The eastern flow is gonna go through a transfer station to be reduced to DC back to AC. Anything west doesn't have to go through that transfer station.
So I, you know, we need to just keep a close eye on it as it, as it moves forward. But they did say that they would be here in June, perhaps, with.
An application for. That isn't them. It's gotta be the landowners.
Right.
Anything else, Charlie?
No.
Ms. Kelly?
No, thank you.
You're mad at me 'cause I didn't ask you first?
I am.
Was there, did you cover any legislation that needs to be talked about?
I don't know of anything.
They adjourned. They're done for this.
Yeah, they did adjourn, so.
The election, what do you call it? Yeah. Anyway, things that we need to clean up went before the governor last week sometime, is, I happened to find that out. For election stuff. That was an accident. I just talked too much and I asked it while I was on the phone.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none. We adjourned. Was it Halen out there, Troy?